Welcome. To the Tuesday, August twentieth, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting. Would you please all join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Misty?
Weir?
Here.
Smock?
Here.
Clements?
Here.
Dewater?
Here.
Morris?
Here.
I'll take a motion to approve the August twentieth, twenty twenty-four agenda, please.
So made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five is public discussion. If you would like to address the mayor and council, please come up to the podium.
Yeah, I'm just, good evening, council, mayor. I'm just doing a follow-up from last week that I asked about a five-minute ruling. If you call in before noon the day of, to be on the agenda to have five minutes for the conversation. I don't see anything on the agenda tonight. Did we even think about that, or did I just blow it over, or what?
Misty, I'll let you answer that.
We actually reached out to several cities in Iowa throughout the whole thing. Most of them are three minutes. Waterloo does not allow five minutes any longer. Even with the request, you can write in a written comment. They are not read at city meetings, but they are noted in the minutes.
That's something new? I just wanted, wonder where, then just a couple, three things under the public discussion. One, I had some people bring to my attention. Have we thought about going down to the Angels Island and taking the street sweeper and sweeping the walk? You take your children, handle, we were down there the other day with our dogs and our daughter, and it's just terrible on the sidewalk. So I'm asking if we can, not saying on a regular basis, but go down there and sweep the sidewalks to get them a little cleaner so they don't look as bad. We advertise and build up Angels Park. So I'm hoping that maybe we could look at that and do that. I don't think that would be a big expense. And then another thing that was brought to my attention is about spraying for mosquitoes in the summer. Other communities do do it. I didn't bring the literature, I could next time. They say they do that, it does help some. I'm not saying it's a fix, but they do do it. And then my other thing under public discussion would be maybe to think, and I think somebody brought it up to Mr. Smock a while back, think about the idea of maybe a laser light show with music next year instead of fireworks on the celebration. A lot of people, you'd stop the complaining, have a lot to complain. And my dogs, I don't want to give them medication, but I don't want to go through that anymore either. And if we can just think about it, look at costs and stuff, that's all I'm asking.
Yes, and you are correct, Steve, that is something that went on the committee's list. We've not done our recap yet, so our debrief from this year's, but that is something that we are adding to it because it was approached after the fact, but is something absolutely that will be considered in the next year.
Well, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
And just to answer your question in regards to the cleaning of the trails, Public Works Department have, went out there with a couple tanker trucks, actually. We did it before the block party, you know, obviously we were going to have a lot of guests there that night. And they do it periodically, within twenty-four hours, it's just the same it is.
And I'm just saying that maybe, you know.
It's really, but on the other hand of that, we're working hand-in-hand with the DNR to mitigate the geese issue. So that's something that will start next spring. You know, there's a couple people that may even be trained in our city to help the DNR with that process. Yeah. You betcha.
Yeah, I don't know if this is the time or not to ask, but item number twenty, that kind of confused me a little. It says, "Council is to consider the elimination of Moy fees and the extension of the number of days residents to give to respond to it." Why would we do anything like that? I mean, would you go out mow the lawn for them then?
Well, I mean, we're going to discuss it, you know, at item twenty, and at that time you can comment as well.
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
I'll comment then.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Tonight, we have been asked by the railroad if we would read a proclamation regarding September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth as railroad crossing awareness. The proclamation, National Seat Tracks Think Train Week. Whereas Seek Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the United States from September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Whereas two thousand one hundred and ninety-two rail-grade crossing collisions resulted in seven hundred and sixty-five personal injuries and were responsible for two hundred and forty-eight fatalities in the United States during twenty twenty-three. And whereas one thousand three hundred and seventy-eight pedestrian trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States, resulting in six hundred and sixty-three pedestrians being killed and another seven hundred and fifteen injured while trespassing on railroad property, excuse me, right-of-way during twenty twenty-three. And whereas educating and information the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad way, right-of-ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with highway rail-grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railway, railways, and obeying established traffic laws, will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver Incorporated, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad corporation commit to partnering together in an effort to educate at a national level all aspects of railroad safety. To enforce applicable laws in support of National Seat Tracks Think Train Week, September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth. Therefore, I, Dean Koblizka, Mayor, City of Evansdale, do hereby attest my full support proclaiming September twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four, National Seat Tracks Think Train Week, and I encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education.
Thank you.
That was a mouthful. Moving on to seven. Approval of the consent agenda, please.
All moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight, approval of the resolution calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number nine, Resolution sixty-eight seventy-nine, Resolution authorizing and approving a loan agreement, providing, providing for the insurance, issuance of two million fifteen thousand general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series twenty twenty-four A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same.
I move passage of Resolution sixty-eight seventy-nine.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Number ten, on our agenda is a public hearing, disposal of city property. We had only received one bid, and we will open that bid and open our public hearing, six oh nine P M.
Publication is on file. No public comments were received.
Do you need a drum roll?
Do you want me to do the whole thing?
Yes, please.
We, Austin and April Russell of three twenty-four Bright Street, Evansdale, Iowa, hereby bid fifteen hundred for the property located at one 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 Bright Street, Evansdale, Iowa, legally described as the follows. That part of Lot Two, out of her barns, plat number ten, in Black Hawk County, Iowa, described as the follows, commencing four hundred and forty feet north of the southwest corner, and said Lot Two, then south one ten feet, thence east two fifty feet, thence north twenty-two feet, more or less, thence northwest, oh, I, northerly, to a point sixty-four feet east of the point of beginning, thence west sixty-four feet to the point of beginning, except the west ninety feet, parcel ID eight nine one two three three one seven seven zero zero two, property.
Okay. Any public comment, council?
I'm assuming the person that put the bid in owns the adjacent property and is going to combine the lots, as we discussed. Okay. Perfect.
This is Austin and April Russell.
Alrighty.
I also believe that was above our minimum ask, so it fulfilled the requirement of what we set in place.
That is correct.
Make a motion to accept the bid on city property.
Well, we'll actually go to the resolution.
Sorry, sorry.
It is, it is a public hearing, so if anyone has any input.
But you got the next one, Dottie.
Nope, I had my turn.
Okay, that being said, at six eleven, we will close the public hearing. Resolution, item eleven, I should say, Resolution sixty-eight eighty, approving the sale of city property.
It's all you, Dottie.
I move to accept our bid on city property.
Second.
So, resolution is approved. The property will be, quick claim dean, we'll have some paperwork for you to sign for fifteen hundred dollars. We'll just set up some time to get together to do that. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All in favor?
We need to vote.
Roll call.
Yep, thank you. I was just going to say, formalize it.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Now it is.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations.
Now it's official.
Thank you.
Number twelve, Resolution sixty-eight eighty-one, approving the final plans, specifications, form of contract, and cost estimate, and authorize Iowa Department of Transportation to advertise for bids for Lafayette Road Reconstruction Project. Actually, I just found out last Wednesday that that was actually happening today. So this is a little bit later than I would like to do it, obviously. They, the DOT, at ten o'clock this morning, accepted bids for the project. I haven't heard of any response. As soon as I do, I will let all of you know, by email. Here is our one set of very heavy final plans, if anyone wants some daytime reading.
Can you get us all a copy of that?
Would you really like a copy?
No.
Okay. But it's available for anyone to come into the office and review if they'd like to. I have, you know, some questions and such, you know, from the public, obviously. Let's go ahead and prove this, and I'd like to add lib a little bit on that.
And mayor, just enough, and this is more for the public, because again, this has been around for as long, we keep trying to get it out there, but again, we're limited on how quickly the DOT will let us move and all that.
That is correct.
There's, there's some red tape, you know, since it is a partially funded product, a project, excuse me. But I did want to just kind of recap, as, as I also stepped in, this was something where I came into my term. This was just starting to move. One, we looked, and the council had approved curb and gutter.
That's correct.
The other thing that was very important to me, as many citizens had brought up as well, and then just simply from a personal safety of our community, to not only link us to Elk Run, but really dedicate some kind of, not just sidewalk, but like our nature trailer, our bigger bike trails. So that is something that is in these plans as well, for those that have not had to take a look. It will be curb and gutter, obviously, and then there is a large bike trail, so kind of think the wider one off of Gilbert.
Eight foot?
Yep, so the larger piece in there, which is just on the one side, but I think the double width, basically, is, is going to be very beneficial. The other piece was, of course, something that was very important to me, I felt, was really the foot traffic we had for students. You know, the school zone is very, very close to there, and that's a very busy intersection. This is something that will be put up with the plans and bid to have dedicated crosswalks, along with lighted, basically manually activated signs to where it will lighten. Just if you've seen them around, it won't be a traffic light, but has the neon signs, has the flashing lights, has the other things there, so that as our kids and parents that want to come have a nice, safer way of crossing a very busy roadway, especially during that time. So those were a couple of very key features that I wanted out of this road, not only from hearing feedback, but myself personally thinking of our community and the safety of what we could offer. So those were all put into these new plans that I, that I think are going to be a great addition.
Yep. And we're, there's not a final say yet, that's, I'm hesitant to say anything about when we're going to start this project, because we've been saying we're going to start this project for, it seems like, forever. So I will go ahead and formally ask for a motion to approve Resolution sixty-eight eighty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call.
Weir?
Yes.
Smock?
Yes.
Clements?
Yes.
Dewater?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
But once we find out exactly how, if you'd like to talk to, once we find out exactly when this project is going to start, we will let the, we will let the public know. It'll be face, posted on Facebook, it'll be posted on our website. For everybody within that area, really from Lafayette, southern portion of Lafayette, all the way to Dubuque Road, will receive letters for, because we will get together as a community to review the plans and all that, and have public awareness meetings. That is yet to come. Again, once, you know, it's determined exactly when the project's going to start, you'll be the first to know.
And you just answered the question I was going to ask.
Okay.
Public information, and it's a long time coming, and everyone's ready for it to happen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
We are, we are all pushing very hard to start it as soon as possible, but DOT gets to be the, the final okay, so. I'm ready. We're going to keep trying.
Number thirteen, request to approve right-of-way agreement with Metronet.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's almost like an even.
I was going to say.
What draws, draws? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Sounds like they've got people that will be in the air, like, right away. I have all the hard copy plans, if any of you would like to see what portions of the city that they would be completing at this time. I know they're going to come in from, like, the crossroads area, so, you know, they'll start on that, that portion of the city. But we have all those plans here, and they are available for you to review. Number fourteen, request to approve and authorize mayor to sign a five-year internet agreement with Metronet. Actually, Austin and I had the opportunity to reach out again to Ron Schmoleg, Schm, however you say his name. Schmudla, Schmudla, you think? This afternoon. And he was able to upgrade our internet. As you could see, it changed at the wastewater treatment plant, and I believe Public Works going up to three hundred, three hundred, is that correct?
Just at wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, wastewater treatment, okay.
Was still a hundred meg, which is still more than sufficient, in my opinion.
They were trying to get at a monthly value, and as you saw by the MediaCom quote, the important piece, there's nothing, there's no cost whatsoever to the city to go with fiber. It's no installation cost or whatever. It's just going to be a five-year agreement, it stays the same price-wise for five years, with no increases, which is pretty incredible, if you think about it. And, that's my next thought. So, no cost. One of the key components to this project, besides Eagles Landing, which we'll talk about at a different time, is the wastewater treatment plant. And the system requirements in the plans for the rehabilitation was fiber. They're going to need fiber to run that SCADA system. The SCADA system is a system that you could be just about anywhere and still run the whole plant from afar. And we did that because of the, pretty much because of the two thousand eight flood. You're frowning, so questions?
I'm looking at this email that says, I'm seeing a fifteen thousand dollar cost of installation.
For, for the wastewater plant alone?
They're going to run it through our city for free.
Yep. There's nobody there to, when they're running through our whole city, people are hooking up. So that reduces their cost to do business. There's nothing there. If, you know, there was going to be a development there, several apartment buildings, but that hasn't come to fruition. So there was, there's just nothing. And MediaCom was twenty grand to run fiber at eight hundred dollars a month. Yeah. No, that's okay.
No, and I can take some of that if you, if you'd be okay, mayor.
Absolutely.
So, my background is heavily with this. I've dealt with Metronet down in Des Moines and some of the newer areas they're coming in. I can tell you just from not only my personal standpoint, but that for our citizens, I love competition. So to bring in another provider into the area is where MediaCom has been pretty predominant. I'm very thrilled with, so very happy to see another provider come in. On the dollar amounts, I'll start with the monthly piece. The dollar amounts of what we've seen for a five-year agreement, I'm typically not a big fan when I'm working with any of my clients to go five years. It's a lot of time that technology can change, so we try to sit to three, unless there is some level of incentive that five is kind of where it's at. That's exactly what we asked Ron this afternoon, and he said, yeah, in order to get this pricing and get you locked in, you got to be at five years. The good news is, is this pricing is not anywhere out of line. In fact, it's probably better than most what I would see for any other business-class client for these speeds, especially to be locked in for that long. Typically, they have steps in them or something, you know, five percent increase or something each year. To your point, Adam, the fifteen thousand dollar install fee, we see it often, and I hate it. Because you're right, you're already in the community, you're already here for everybody else. The good news is, is they actually came down some, again, so they, they're, in my opinion, they're being very good a partner to come in and say, hey, they actually were higher than this initially, and actually came down again, which I was very happy to see. But then, it's still a fifteen thousand dollar one-time cost, and it's because there's nothing else down that way. It costs them way more than fifteen grand to run. So their cost into it is really just kind of a, hey, can you meet us in the middle? Can you get us halfway, something? To get it down that whole road. Two things I look at there is, one, I've dealt even with a client that literally was across the street from a MediaCom corporate office in Des Moines, in West Des Moines specifically, and they wanted over five thousand dollars just to run it across the street. So fifteen thousand dollars to run, and that wasn't even fiber. We see it even in town. So the whole install charge is not unusual. So I do want to preface that I think fifteen thousand dollars is actually a pretty decent deal to get it down to the wastewater treatment plant. But then, and this is long-term planning, and this is absolutely just my pipe dream. Getting internet that direction is something we've always wanted to do to help really service more things in that area, not only for the city, like the wastewater treatment plant, but also Deerwood. So, while it won't be an immediate payback, and it may not go anywhere, I absolutely want to preface that this is absolutely just a theory on a drawing board. But getting it down to the wastewater treatment plant opens up so many more possibilities to being able to service our campground and our campers with public internet, of which we could charge for, so we could offer as a service. So this is something that, yes, is a fifteen thousand dollar cost to us right now, but does have some potential that not only would add some features to our campground, but could potentially generate revenue in the future. And I would put money on it that we let it go six months to a year, you're not going to get it fifteen thousand again. That is my professional opinion.
But anybody asked how much it would be to go that much further?
I don't even know if we'd have to. So there's some other ways to do it, wireless shots and everything to cover that campground that we could look at.
Yeah, and we did have NATEL for quite some time. It was, it was okay service, not great. And, you know, we bought a bunch of equipment for that and all that, but they pulled out of town. So we have nothing there now. Even if we want to do security systems or anything like that, security cameras or anything like that, we, we have no, we have nothing down there to service any of that.
The wastewater treatment plant currently, so again, I also looked at this as an overall cost as, I believe you saw in your packets, and just being responsible of our tax dollars, what we're spending.
Yeah.
We're about eight hundred dollars right now for MediaCom.
Yep.
So we have a net increase of about four hundred dollars. It's like, okay, what's worth it? One, fiber is a significant improvement.
Right.
Over coaxial. It is a business-grade internet, not that MediaCom isn't, but just the grade of internet is different. And two, we don't have service at the wastewater treatment plant now in the form of something hardwired like this. We're running off a hotspot, so I really can't compare apples to apples. So if I say, okay, it's three hundred dollars, we're playing with about a net gain of only about a hundred bucks, if we were offering a similar service. So the increase, while four hundred on paper today, really is only about a hundred bucks if we were, if we had MediaCom in there, and actually would be higher, because MediaCom would charge way more. They'd be about five hundred higher.
Right.
If, if you follow, so.
Yeah.
Those were all the questions I asked of just then, I worked with the mayor on as well, that I believe Metronet is, is putting a pretty fair deal to the table. Again, they dropped their installation cost, and then even talking with them this afternoon, they kept some of the higher speeds, but then even gave us a couple other bumps. The wastewater treatment plant, they went ahead and bumped up at no cost. It stayed twelve hundred, I believe, if you saw on your first offer.
Yep.
They're up to three hundred now, so I, I believe they came to the table to, to play ball.
Well, I, I was hoping we'd see Heartland Technology, but I guess they haven't come into town. The only concern I would have about Metronet is they're untested. I mean, they're, what, been in existence for two years?
Just here, they've been in Evansville, Indiana, that's their home plant.
Yeah.
And they've, you know, they're dismayed it this way now, but they've been in business for several years.
I've been using it at the store for about a year now, and been thrilled with it, great speed and.
We've had a lot.
Couple hiccups here and there, but that was right at the beginning, right when they first just, you know, connected it, so.
So did you, did you have to get fiber run to your business?
Yeah, they were running it all by that area.
Yeah. Just like they're not charging anything to hook up City Hall, the Community Response Center, the Public Works, because they're in the area already.
Well.
And there's several other that will be part of that transition.
So is this different than Waterloo Cable?
It is.
It'll be another competitor.
Okay.
But even Waterloo, you know, if we decided to go with their fiber, because I heard, you know, in years to come, that they will open that up for us, but we don't have an extra three, four, five, eight, ten million to run it through the city and start a cable company.
And I, again, looking big picture, I invite Waterloo, if they would like to expand their services, being right next door, bring it in, add a third competitor. I'm all for it.
Yeah.
Continue to keep prices down and availability high.
Yeah, if they're going to do it for free.
Yeah, yeah, as long as we're not paying tons of buyouts, but that's typically what we see with the ISPs, especially new in town, is they will blanket areas with their, with their backbone and things without the charge. And then mostly what happens is they'll charge a small amount to the consumer, fifty, a hundred dollar install charge. So that kind of helps a little bit of it, but the majority of the actual trenching and things are all just kind of a cost of doing business where they know they can get the return. If we drag it down through Deerwood, or, or, you know, down just that road, there's nothing there that is going to give them their return, so that's why there's at least, they're not asking us to cover it all. But they are asking us at least to kind of help some of that cost.
Since it is a system requirement for the wastewater treatment plant, those, those funds would be paid out of the wastewater treatment plant, you know, and could be actually considered part of this rehabilitation project. If so, you know, we've, we're saving up some reserves, so, you know, we have. If so, you know, we've, we're saving up some reserves, so, you know, we have, um, funds to maybe make the last payment on our own um, for the project. But that would be a wastewater, um, expense.
So we s- we still need to, so this is two separate, we need to approve the five-year agreement initially, and then we need to approve installing.
Yeah, he ended up putting it all together, so yeah, we can, we can do the initial request to approve and authorize the five-year internet agreement with everyone but the wastewater, and then we could approve that separately, cause they were first separate.
Cause yeah, there's nothing there.
Yep.
I would make a motion to approve the, the five-year agreement with MetroNet.
Second.
As, as line item fourteen.
Line item fourteen.
To be clear.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then line item fifteen is request install fiber to wastewater treatment plant and authorize mayor to sign five-year agreement with MetroNet.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number sixteen, request to approve and authorize fire chief to sign ambulance service agreement with Unity Point at Home doing business as Unity Point Hospice. And from what I understand, um, they actually reached out to them, um, to probably do some transfer, transporting of patients. Is that correct?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number seventeen, request to approve and offer, authorize fire chief to sign ambulance EMS restocking agreement with Wheaton Franciscan Healthcare Iowa uh, Incorporated doing business as Mercy One Northeast Iowa. I don't know if you guys have any questions about that, but, um, when we get low on our stock, when we're going back and forth, um, transporting, um, they give us a refill.
This is medication only, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I move passage of the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eighteen, request to approve and authorize the mayor to sign medical director agreement. Um, this is a requirement, uh, that we have a medical director agreement. Um, Mr. Stahl used to be our medical director, um, however, he has moved out of state.
I move passage of the request.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number nineteen, approve, uh, amended vacall twenty-eight eighty-eight agreement with Alcorn Heights. For the third time, hopefully this is the third time's a charm, uh, there's some, uh, I wish I highlighted, which was the, um, work comp. Uh, in that agreement, there was information that was added regarding that.
I move we approve the amended vacall agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number twenty, counsel to consider the elimination of mown fee and the extension in the number of days resident is given to respond to said request. So we've been, you know, of all years, we've had a lot of grass issues, um, there uh, just because of the rain, and sometimes it's just not been convenient to mow because it, it's raining or it hasn't even dried up yet. That being said, we, even on some of our nuisance abatements, we'll send those out. Uh, say, I'll give you, I'll give you a perfect example. We sent a nuisance abatement out on the twentieth of June. Um, it didn't get signed, meaning that they actually received it and signed the certificate until the tenth of July. So there's, um, some of you may know you're not getting mail as frequently as you used to, or sometimes you won't even get mail. I've heard people say that. It's happened here at City Hall where, you know, they don't have enough staff, they don't have enough coverage, we're not getting the mail. Um, it was initially seven days, and that's been several years ago, and then it was reduced to five days, and then it was reduced to three days. Um, it's worse than not here, they may get it tomorrow and they may not get, get it for a week. So, and then we're also charging them twenty-five dollars. So if they, you know, one thing, if they choose not to pay the twenty-five dollars, we can't do anything about it. There's no collection, um, way out there for us to recoup our money or recoup our time. However, if we do out, go out and mow, we can charge the twenty-five dollar administration fee. What we're, I, I think, us being considered the city of good neighbors, I think when we're sending these notices out, please, you know, we're just saying, please mow your lawn or weed eat your weeds. A lot more so this year, it's probably been weeds than grass. Um, but we wanna do it, we wanna give them a reasonable time to do that. Um, and a reasonable time for the mailman to get the mail to them. Um, and then, you know, if it comes to that we actually do have to mow it, then we'll charge the twenty-five dollar administration fee.
On top of the mowing cost.
On top of the mowing cost.
That's just the admin fee.
Yep, that's just the admin fee.
Okay, now, aren't these same butts, same people that have this problem not getting their mowed lawn over and over and over? I mean, uh, it isn't just random here and random there, it, we've got habitual violators. I mean, they're totally habitual violators. And we're going to basically mow their lawn for twenty-five dollars. You can't have a
No, 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 that's on top of the mowing fee. The minimum mowing fee is a hundred dollars.
Okay, that I did not understand.
Okay, we have a minimum mowing fee of a hundred dollars, that's ten thousand, no, it's not. Hundred, a hundred dollars, that's ten thousand square feet and under, and then a hundred and fifty over ten thousand square feet. For your lot size.
Some of these people just don't care, they didn't care what happens, try to collect it. That's about what they say.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
I, I completely understand, but it's, you know, this is just something I'm bringing to council.
Wanna mention the address? I mean, they leave their lawn get that high before they mow it. They got, uh, cut a tree down in the backyard, they got three big piles of of stuff this high out there, and they mow around that, it's a total mess. Trees, parts of the trees laying all over as well as the other, and I'll bet if I live another twenty years, it'll still be in that backyard unless somebody forces them to get rid of it. So what do you do about those kinda things too?
Well, is our code enforcement officer aware of that?
He will be.
Okay, well, we would appreciate the address.
Yeah, you'll, you'll try to be in a good neighborhood, but some people are just plain slobs.
Well, and we do
It, it ruins your property value.
And we do have in our code, you do get, we'll keep this, you get one warning a year. And then if it's not taken care of, we come back and mow. You don't get a warning, you don't get a second warning.
Okay.
And that's stated on our invoice.
That is stated in our code of ordinance, is stated on our invoice.
You give them a week, you give them two weeks, you give them whatever, it ain't gonna make most of them any difference anyway. It really isn't. I don't know why you'd even wanna give them that, that opportunity. I really don't.
It's up to the council to decide.
I don't, it's up to council.
I mean, there, I'm, I'm assuming there's gotta be a, an official process you go through.
Yes, there is.
The notice has to be sent, you gotta jump through the hoops to legally step onto their property and mow it for them.
Yep.
Um, and, so I mean, I think the, the fine is fair, but again, we're gonna get paid, um.
Well, if, you know, okay, so clarification again, you know, it's a hundred dollars minimum, and that's under ten thousand square feet. Um, and then we, we charge for the people that are there, uh, the equipment that is there, and if they're weedinging, that equipment as well. So that's all on the invoice, plus this twenty-five dollar administration fee, that just helps cover our costs. Cause we have costs, we have, you know, follow-up and send out letters and
Currently, of, of the fines that do go out of this nature, how many get paid? Like, uh, as a percentage?
I would say I don't know, thirty to fifty percent.
Are you talking the admin fee?
No, the, the mowing fee.
Oh, they, they normally get assessed.
Oh, you put it to their taxes?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so that's getting collected. So all we're talking about is the admin fee?
Yeah, that's all we're talking about. See, we, when we send our, when Misty sends, I should say, the initial invoice, um, and that has helped cover administrative costs, because, you know, code enfor- enforcement officer goes out there, he takes pictures, he sends them to, to Misty, and then she sends out a notice. So it's, it is warranted, that twenty-five dollar fee. But if they don't pay it, we can't do anything to collect it, and we can't assess it. The only time we can assess is if we actually mow. We can add it to the mowing fee.
Okay.
That's allowed by state code.
And I would say probably ninety percent of the people on the list are really quick to get it done after they get that notice. You have a couple.
So, I guess I'm confused as to what we are considering here.
What we're considering is increasing the amount of days that we are giving our residents, um, because because the mail is slower than it what it used to be, believe it or not.
So we can go back to seven days, we, if we want, or we can go back to five days?
That is correct. It's a, and it's, it's gotta be done by ordinance anyway.
So you're, you're wanting to go to ten days versus seven?
I, I, not necessarily. I would, I would say that seven is
Seven sounds good.
So, you know, seven is something that we thought about, and then we thought, if we wrap it into our, just our regular, you know, with our new software and everything, they get a fourteen-day notice for any nuisance abatement. So we can tie it into that system.
But that gets them fourteen days.
And it gives them fourteen days. So, you know, I think the reason why we went down to three days is because, um, by the time somebody complains, and it's already twelve inches, right? Three days is, is, could make it a big difference. So can five, so can seven. So, you know, our ordinance says it has to be twelve inches.
Could do anything about it, really.
Henceforth, it's three days. I totally understand it, it's just not realistic. We can increase it to five days. This is again, by ordinance. I just wanted something for you guys to consider if you even wanna move forward with that, or keep it at three days.
And something to consider, the seven days would typically give a weekend in, in there for those who work.
I mean, if they've already got to twelve inches and we're sending them stuff, what does it matter, really?
Would you please come up to the podium? That's fine.
Um, I used to look at those reports, and it didn't look like there was that many annually that went to the county to assess property. So I'm wondering if we're doing a lot of legwork here for nothing, when we have such, per last year, we have such a minimal amount to get turned over for taxes at the county. Now, if you had a list, and I seen a list of twenty, thirty, forty names, I'd say this makes more sense, but the very few that I seen on it last year, I think you're wasting your time on things you could be working on better than trying to reanalyze this and change this. Just my opinion as a resident.
So those are ones that are being turned over, not necessarily ones that were already paid.
Right. But those people that go to the county are ones you spent a lot of time on before it went to the county. So I'm just saying, maybe you need to think about that a little bit, if this has a lot of value to it versus other things you could be doing. Just a food for thought for time, you're talking about time.
Yeah, I, I hear ya.
Okay, thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Since stated on the invoice copy that was in our packet says that the number of days, whatever it is, is from the date of the notice. I think seven days is very reasonable, because even in a perfect world, if you made it, mailed it out one day and they received it the next, they've only got five physical days to do the mowing. And so if it's raining in one or two of those days, they have to almost immediately jump on it. So I would like to see it seven days.
And I, I like the fact too that, that seven days and, you know, incorporates a, a weekend in there.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Well, again, like I said, it's gotta be passed by, um, ordinance anyway, so I can, um, we can bring that ordinance to you on, at the next meeting to make that change. I would like a motion to go ahead and move forward with that change.
And the only thing I had, Mayor, and this is just not only for, I believe, our clarification, but then any of the public, just so that they understand where the structure fees come from. The information we do have in front of us does state our base charge starts at one fifty per property with no square footage designation. So just for clarification, if we are splitting it, and it'll be in the ordinance, I'm guessing.
Ordnance like that?
In this invoice.
Oh, that needs to be changed.
And that's where I was seeing the one fifty, so when you'd said one hundred, that's where my confusion came in.
And that's, that was set by council, the fee scale?
Sure. I just wanted clarification, so that if somebody does look it up and they get a hundred and fifty, but then they play this recording back, well, the mayor said it was only a hundred, just when we put in the ordinance, that I just wanted to make sure. I, I just don't like trying to, you know, like, we're trying to be shady with somebody about, so, that was all. Is that the one I see tonight literally just states one fifty, no square footage requirement or anything.
Okay.
Now, I, sorry, I'm fine for that too. Fuel's expensive, our labor's expensive.
Minimum one fifteen goes up to two hundred?
I believe it is.
Okay.
We'll clarify when we do the ordinance.
Thank you, yeah.
No, that's okay, I just, that way, that way we are not misinforming anybody.
Yeah, it's actually not in the ordinance, it's a resolution that was set by council.
Okay.
It's a several-page resolution of all of our fees.
Gotcha.
That's where that's at, and I apologize, for some reason I was thinking it was a hundred. I guess the minimum is one fifteen. So I'll just take a motion to, um, move forward with this. Um, be thinking about the mowing fee. Um, or I don't even need a motion, we'll, I'll just get it on the, as the ordinance at the next meeting.
And I guess I'm, uh, short of extra legwork that has to go in for the twenty-five dollars, I say we send it. I guess I don't see any difference there, those that go through, and again, not trying to be hardship on anybody, but those that get it and pay it, then they pay it. Cause if not, if we have to go mow, then we're gonna add it anyways. So as long as it's not adding unnecessary overhead, because we're already having to send it, if you can collect the twenty-five, collect the twenty-five. Cause it's obviously already gotten to that point, and we're now extending it to seven days. That's my personal feeling.
It takes a while to get to twelve inches of grass.
And, and, and actually, it's not the grass as bad as the weeds.
Yeah, either way.
I mean, there was
It takes a while.
I'm not gonna mention any addresses or names, but there is a, a house on Evans and, um, they, the, the weeds were as tall as their house. So, you know, I mean, anyway, I
Yep. But it's correct, and as we've heard from, from our public panels here tonight too, it's, it's not only just property value, but just simply living condition. I mean, it's just, it's, it attracts extra bugs and rodents and just everything, and if you keep it trimmed, I mean, I, I'm one that's very anal over my yard, to the point of the direction I mow it. Just because I love the look of a freshly mowed yard, so, just having a neighborhood that, it takes pride in itself to just look good for yourself and your neighbors.
Yeah.
I, I, you know, I hope everybody could be responsible like that, just, again, city of good neighbors, so.
Yeah.
Of all the things you can do to make your property look better, you know, cutting a few weeds, that's about the cheapest thing.
Just little landscaping.
Just a little, a little time.
So Dan, you were looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking, it
Just to bring it back.
I'm just looking for a motion to bring it back. I'm gonna do it separately as far as the, um, I'm gonna do it separately as far as eliminate, elimination of the mown fee, unless you just wanna vote on that tonight.
Yeah, we can bring it back, that's fine.
Okay.
That way, there's, yeah, might as well, so that way it's on the agenda as an actual item.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, so we'll just, that was just a consideration, I don't need a vote.
Alright, so we're gone now.
Yeah, on that one. Twenty-one, request to approve the amendment to business property lease agreement for JB Pools. Um, that just said, uh, he's actually, um, he will be leasing that property, uh, once it does close. Um, this is gonna be temporary, cause he has bought a lot, uh, in our city, um, across from Evansdale Truck and Trailer on Doris, just behind Flying J. Um, so he's gonna be building. Um, so it, it just allowed us to, um, that he didn't have to stay in the lease for the whole six months, so.
I would make a motion to approve it.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And request from QuickTrip to authorize the extension of the contingency date, um, for property located nine fifty-two Gillett And request from QuickTrip to authorize the extension of the contingency date, um, for property located at nine fifty-two Gilroyville Road um, to August twenty-third, twenty-four, which is Friday. We all know this. It's still legality. They have a whole legal team that, they just make sure all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed.
I move to, uh, extend that date.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Opposed? Mayor and council reports, um, the, the only thing I have to state, I was a little disappointed, uh, went to court, um, last Friday for three oh three Minor Drive, not going to mention any names tonight. I think everybody knows where that property is. Um, the one that was, the initial hearing, um, he just extended it, said he needed more time. So, um, he actually was late for this, for this court hearing, um, and uh, the honor had called his name, the magistrate had called his name, um, he wasn't there. Then he walks through the door, and I'm saying, you know, your honor, I said, he just walked through the door, and he says, too bad. He had his turn. Um, that being said, uh, we were excited because we thought we can move forward with that property, because we've been dealing with it forever. Um, however, the judge ended up hearing this case after the jury left. And he pleaded not guilty. So we will have a hearing, um, and not until October fourth. Just want to update you on that one, because I know we've been pretty much working with that one since twenty sixteen, so, um.
I thought it was longer than that, actually.
Probably, it, I mean, that's, that's the only paper trail we have. I think Rick Ryder, I know Rick Ryder dealt with him back in the day, but I, we don't have a paper trail from that. Better.
I thought Martus was still mayor when we.
Oh, I'm sure, probably.
It's almost like a game with this guy.
It is. No. No. They got an extension, but we already have a hearing set.
Okay, because I heard somewhere they said that he was going to build a huge pole building out there?
Well, that would be within his right.
Yeah, because I have heard that five years ago or six years ago, the same thing.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, thank you, John. Despair with us. And call me, I'll give you that date of that hearing. Yeah, okay. Other than that, council, go ahead. Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn then.
So moved.
Second.
Have a great evening. Oh, all in favor? Opposed? Have a great evening.